I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have honoring excellence. Dallas, you have some things to honor?
Yes, we do. We have, we actually have three tremendous district employees that we're going to recognize this evening. I think one of them, we're actually also going to introduce you to a young lady that you may hear from just here in a moment. First off, I am going to introduce a couple of our staff members to introduce the Carol Brown Award recipient for 2015. Of course, professional development so big in Liberty Public Schools and tonight we have a chance to raise that to the top. So if I could invite a couple of ladies to come up, they'll introduce themselves and then also present this very prestigious award.
Hi there. My name is Carrie Gabriel and this is Alicia Newitt and we're the district representatives for the Professional Development Committee. We're here tonight to present the Carol Brown Award for Excellence in Professional Development. This award was designed to recognize Liberty Public Schools employees who exemplify effective use of professional development. A little bit about Carol Brown, she was with the district for over 25 years and most recently in our Academic Support Services Building or Department. And her job was to make sure that teachers were getting quality professional development and she was the behind-the-scenes person to make sure everything ran smoothly. And many people would say just how caring she was in that process and she was very admired by teachers and the staff that she worked with alike. This award was established in her honor as a means of recognizing her dedication to Liberty Public Schools. Any individual selected for this award strives for continual self-improvement and is the voice for professionals both in their department and their buildings. These are the professionals who walk the talk and they come to school with new initiatives and do what's best for both the students and the adults in the LPS. We would also like to thank the Liberty School District Foundation for their partnership in reviewing applications and selecting the recipient based on a scoring guide that's developed by PDC. Before we move on to the recipient, we would like to welcome and recognize Carol's family. Her husband, Bill Brown, and her daughter, Carrie Brown, are here with us tonight. So we want to thank them for their continued support of this award.
And our award recipient this year goes to Mary Coogan, who is a science teacher at Liberty North High School. She has been teaching for 29 years, 15 of which have been in Liberty Public Schools. She has participated in professional development, both as a presenter and a graduate student. She believes that her PD opportunities have allowed her to improve teaching strategies, gain additional content knowledge, hone her skills in behavior management, and improve learning opportunities for students in her classroom. She is a member of the Professional Development Committee, the Curriculum Council Committee, and she has been a Professional Development Committee Chair in the past. She also belongs to the National Science Teachers Association and the Science Teachers of Missouri. And she would like to attend the National Science Teachers Association National Conference and National Tennessee with her award money. So this is for you, Mary. Thank you so much for your service in Liberty Public Schools.
Did you have anything you wanted to share with us?
Yeah, I just want to say the award really is all about Carol and she spent all of her time helping other people go to professional development and she's still helping me, so I really appreciate that. Thanks to everybody.
Thank you very much. The very last week of April and into the first week of May, we had the privilege to announce both our district's Support Employee of the Year and our district's Teacher of the Year. First time I think we'd ever done both of those recognitions in the same week. And we had such a good time at both of those surprise events. One of those actually took place in this room on a Monday morning. And if you would like to see those, if you haven't, they are on both our Channel 18 and YouTube channel. At this time, this is a special night because I think for the first time we have both of those individuals at the same room. So I'm going to introduce you to Mr. Kurt Laven. Kurt is our Support Employee of the Year here. He works in the Technology Department as a technology specialist and has been in the district for so long and I know our board has worked with him closely over the years. And I would say, and I would say this for both of our recipients, that never before have I received so many emails from staff and community and parents where they said they're the perfect choice for an award like this. Kurt is definitely that as he stands here. I also want to introduce Mr. Brett Kisker. Brett teaches Project Lead the Way at Liberty North High School. We had a great surprise event, a staff, a staff meeting, I guess, that turned into the announcement the first of May up at Liberty North. And you may recall Brett received state recognition back in the fall, all the great things he's doing with the Project Lead the Way. And I know he's going to represent us tremendously at the, at the state level as he moves forward in that over the summer. So we have this evening official banners for each of our recipients. This is definitely a photo op in the making, right here. And we would like to recognize these two as our Employees of the Year in 2015 and in the next year. I would also like to share before they scramble back to their seats, these are two very humble gentlemen. They do not like attention. I figured that one out real quick. We had to drag them to this meeting. Neither of them attended our luncheons at the Early Childhood Center because they had work to do. But we, we thank you so much for all the great things you do in our district each and every day. Before I turn it back over to Mr. Evans, I may fill you in that we have a birthday boy up here, Kurt Laven. His birthday I saw on Facebook this morning is today. So I think we have to sing "Happy Birthday" to him.
Yes.
Dr. Tucker, would you like to begin the first note?
Can we do this at convocation?
I think you, I think you did that.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Kurt. Happy birthday to you.
That's a first. The timing seemed right. The timing seemed right. So thank you all for your attention and I will turn it over at this time back to Mr. Evans.
All right. Well, we have one more moment of honoring excellence and that's why I was fishing around under the table. We have one of the board members we would like to honor for his service for the last three years as the Board President. I came on to the board just as he got elected as the President and have appreciated the leadership he has provided to all of us over the last three years and his service on the board before then as well. I also expect him to continue to coach and advise me as the President, so the continued role there. But Mr. Scott Connor?
Thank you.
You said there was one more person and I was looking around the audience who was standing up. I didn't know what was coming. Thank you, I appreciate that.
The appreciation is all ours, I think. We need to approve the agenda and then we will take a brief break to be able to thank the honorees. The motion is I move the board adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Sandra, will you call roll?
Scott?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Lucy and Carrie.
We will take a brief break till, for about seven minutes, 17 after. If anyone wants to talk during public comment, there are blue cards that you can fill out and turn into one of the board members so that you have an opportunity to speak at public comment as soon as the break is over. Seven minutes.
We wonder where Hannah gets it.
All right, we are at the public comments portion of our meeting. Did anyone want to make public comment? I don't have any blue cards. Anyone else have blue cards? No blue cards. All right. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the May 4th meeting. This is consent, correct?
Consent.
Oh, you're right. It's in consent. So I move the board approve consent agenda items 3.01 through 6.03.
Second.
I'm looking for it. It's under 6.03 is the actual. Yep. Thank you. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval by, of the board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through board's subcommittee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Sandra, will you call roll?
Scott?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Lucy and Carrie.
Thank you. Under unfinished business, we have Administrator Compensation Plan.
Yeah, under 7.01, you'll recall from our May study session, we presented this as first read and looking toward administrative salary and benefits with the following two items. First would be to fund the salary schedule for the 2015-2016 school year vertically and horizontally in respect to movement. Secondly, for those administrators who in their current position had previously experienced a freeze during 2009 or 2010 school year and the 2010-11 school years, be provided an additional half a step for the 2015-2016 year. So that is our recommendation this evening with a note attached to that and that in looking toward next year, we will be evaluating our processes that we have in place for our Administrative Salary and Benefits Committee, probably starting those conversations earlier in the fall than waiting until the spring and doing that kind of in conjunction with Team Liberty. So Team Liberty would meet in the mornings and then follow up with afternoon conversations with our Administrative Salary and Benefits Committee. So starting earlier than later in that process for next year. So that is our recommendation this evening.
We've had a fair degree of conversation over this topic over the past several months meetings. Any questions for Jeremy or discussion? I move the board adopt the Administrator Compensation Plan as presented.
Second.
Sandra, will you call roll?
Scott?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Lucy and Carrie.
All right, new business, the budget update for the coming year?
Yeah, under 8.01, as Ms. Sullivan comes to the podium, I just want to briefly review this spring and the budget development process and the conversations that we've been having. As you'll recall, the process starts early in the spring semester and we shared bits and pieces with you along the way, looking at our revenue projections in March, looking at our expenditure projections in April, and then here in May presenting to you this evening a first draft of what the budget will look like. With the caveat being that accordance with statute, the requirement for a board to approve a budget is no later than the end of June. So we'll certainly look to finalize that, bring that recommended budget document to you in June for adoption and approval with the caveat being that it is subject to change and that we know that with budgets, they're fluid and they're ever-evolving. Appreciate Cindy's efforts around this. She'll highlight some of the information this evening as well as the efforts of her department. So turn it over to Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker. And my third and final PowerPoint, bear with me, hold your applause, but this will be it for me for a while, I hope. And I have a PowerPoint changer tonight, so we may have fun doing that as well. The first slide, we have, you have seen most of this before, let me preface that. And so we will just be reiterating what is actually in the document and what possibly will change from this document to the final presentation in June. So once again, I'll try and flip through this pretty quickly. You have a copy of this presentation on Board Docs, so you can go back to it if we have questions that you think of later. The timeline hasn't changed in many years. The cycle goes from June to June with your approval starting, then monthly budget amendments, and then reassessment of where the budget is in August with the assessed valuation in January with student membership and ADA. December through March, we start the whole process again with the zero-based budgeting where budget managers are asked to prioritize their needs and submit those to us for this final document. And then in August, we'll have our tax rate hearing and adjust anything out of there. I think I went out of order. And April through May, Team Liberty works on the recommendations to the superintendent and then in June, we start all over again. So the cycle repeats the same every year. The next slide will show you the general budget summary for the current year and projected as of right now for next year. The current year budget summary is truly just budget at this point. POs will be finalized on May 29th, so we can truly have a cutoff with our last check right, the middle of June, and then we will get all of the payrolls done and at the end of June, we will truly know where we are at. But until that time, we present you what is in the budget as you have amended it and accepted it. The 15-16 budget you see there, it's based on what we know. At this point in time, we will get another state memo tomorrow and then another state memo in June and that could change our revenue picture either up or down one way or the other. The expenditure side of the budget is pretty solid unless we get something new, new piece of information, but I don't anticipate that doesn't usually happen. It's usually the revenue side that changes from time to time in, through the months of May and June. So what you're looking at is ending right now today at an 18.61% fund balance for 2014-15. We are projecting an 18.15% fund balance for 15-16. That is, shows a little bit of a dip because our revenues are increasing at a slower rate for next year than our expenditures are. We are still presenting you a balanced operating budget, however, our expenditures are moving faster than our revenues at this point. Hopefully, that will change with news from the state legislature in May and June with the adoption of the state budget. We hope to see that change. Also, that could change based on whatever our beginning fund balance is for next year that is carried over for this year, that could spike up that fund balance percentage as well. But at this point in time, that is where we're sitting. The next slide will show you, one you're familiar with, is the how our revenue is divided out between our sources. You know that we rely heavily on local funds, 54.31%, with the remainder largest piece coming from the state with other little pieces coming from the various sources. You can see in the budget document what these sources are, how they play out, if you want to see what's comprised of all of those pieces of the pie. The next slide will show you the revenue. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, and maybe one of you. Just to clarify, on our percentage attributed to local income, aren't we a larger percentage of local income than most, many others?
Yes, that is correct. You're correct. Our revenue assumptions for next year include an assessed valuation increase of 3%. I know that the Assessor's Office has told us that real estate has increased 5%, but historical knowledge tells us that commercial and agricultural don't follow the same trend as real estate. They typically will decrease when real estate goes up. So to be conservative, we have kept that at a 3%, 3% increase, which is in keeping with the trends that we have seen historically, so we don't want to inflate that without a real true knowledge of what that percentage is going to be. Also, that levy information is just there. You know that our operating levy is 4.9 and our capital levy is 36 cents. We base our local revenue also on a collection rate of 97.89% collection rate. That is also based on historical data. We keep a running tally every year of what our collection rate has been and adjust it up or down accordingly. It has fallen a little bit this year. Last year, we collected almost 99% of our revenue, so we might think we'll see that in delinquent collections if we didn't see it in current collections. But at any rate, right now, we're only collecting about 98% of our revenue. So hopefully, we'll make that up. Does she have questions? Okay. Moving on to our state, I left the proration on there. This is the last time you'll probably see the proration for a long time unless something changes. In the years past, we've always, always had less than 100% proration. This year, due to House Bill 1689, the proration factor is now always going to be 100% and they have prorated the state adequacy target instead. So the state adequacy target, as you'll see, is being budgeted at $6,076. Always in the past, we, or in the past few years, we've budgeted that at $6,131. We are hearing that this is a safe estimate to budget at for right now until we know what the governor's going to do with the budget. Then that state adequacy target represents some, a realistic amount that the state says it takes to educate a child. So that's, we get $6,076 estimated per weighted average daily attendance from state multiplied by several other things. That's the 18-step formula that Dr. Tucker talks about. So that's just one small piece of it.
And how much does it actually cost?
$10,000 per student.
As far as your per pupil expenditure?
Yes.
So difference of $4,000 per student?
Right.
What it actually costs and what this state says it should cost?
Right.
Yes.
Prop C is based on prior year weighted average daily attendance. That's the 1 cent sales tax directed toward education. We have been assured that $910 per weighted ADA is a reasonable amount for that. And our dollar value modifier is 1.08, up from 1.079 last year, so we came a tiny, tiny bit. And that dollar value modifier reflects the purchasing power of a dollar for our area. So that goes into taking our funding, you modify it by the dollar rate, we have a new funding level. Once again, that's part of the 18-step process. So those are the state assumptions that we're operating under this year for next year's budget. For the federal revenue, we don't see any significant changes. Budget amendments will align with actual allocations. We just received our, our federal grant allocations and they're right in line, no significant changes to that. So as we get new information about federal, other federal monies, we will amend the budget accordingly and you will see that come through. Any questions about the revenue side of things in our assumptions? Okay, we'll move on to our next slide. Ready? Oh, we've got it. This is just a quick glance of our assessed valuation that we talked about earlier, how we are relying a lot on the residential property assessment to fund our local revenue. We have a tiny bit, you probably can hardly see the red line of agriculture, a little bit of commercial, and a little bit of personal property, but that's how our assessment is divided out. The next slide, please. And this will show you by percentage, that same information that was just on that graph, so you can take a look at that and let us know if you have any questions. You can go on, Greg. Thank you. This is a particularly interesting slide, our assessed valuation trends. Every odd year is an assessment year and you can see for the last several cycles, we've gone up and down and up and down in our reassessment years, but this year, it looks like we will continue the trend and go up. Last year, we realized 2.83% increase. So hopefully, that will go up just a little bit more when we actually get 15 numbers in August. So hopefully, that dip trend is done and we're headed back up. So that, that's kind of nice to see. I hope in, in August when we update this, it's a good thing. So we'll go on to the next slide and talk about then student enrollment. We are waiting on updated demographer numbers, so these are still based on the last demographer study that we had in 2012-13. You will see the first few columns show what the demographer has projected with the last two showing actually where we ended up. And he's been very good for the most part. Last year, we projected a 3% growth rate and actually realized that. This year, we are budgeting on a 4% rate with an increase in 415 students. And that flows through all of our budgeting documents and the fact that we budget building allocations, revenue streams on student enrollment. So that's a very important number to get right. So I'm really anxious to see what the new demographer data shows, to see, hopefully, we'll get that before we have to present the new document and, or the final document in June and we can update the numbers to reflect what the demographer has said. Because I really am, it's exciting to see that he's hit it so close and that helps us immensely when we're trying to budget. So that's good data to have. So if you want to move on to the next slide, we're going to move on to the expenditures. And just like the revenues, you can see how we are divided out percentage-wise, salary and benefits are 68% of our total budget. Couple weeks ago, you were provided with information that showed how we rank with our peer groups expenditure-wise and that we are really right on target with our peer groups. So this information should be no surprise to you. You've seen it a number of ways and in that latest document that was provided to you. The next slide, we'll talk about the assumptions just like we did in the revenue. Based on the additional students, we are allowing for a 12 FTE count increase. When you grow in students, you need additional staff. And so every year in your operating projection, you will see an additional FTE allowance. And if the population continues to grow, we have to look at those numbers and potentially increase that FTE, but for next year, we're allowing for 12. We are allowing for a step and a half increase for all of the staffs. That means that everybody gets a step and the people that were here during the freeze year will recoup that half a step toward recouping the whole two years. That whole two-year recruitment will be done in FY '17 if Team Liberty chooses to do that again, which we have been assured that that is what they want to do at this point. It also includes for horizontal movement, when a teacher increases their knowledge level with a new degree, they get to move over a column, so we have to account for that in our budget. And it also includes a partial implementation of the Classified Salary Study, which you are aware of, the Evergreen Study. Benefits, estimated medical insurance increases 9.4%. If you will recall, in Team Liberty conversations, we had a 5% cap every year that Team Liberty was guaranteed to get to put toward benefits that would be paid by the district. On the years that those benefits did not reach 5% increase, it was less than 5%, the unspent percentage would then roll over to the next year and increase the next year. So we have had good years where we haven't had such large increases and we have been able to roll those over. And we work closely with Holmes-Murphy to make sure that that is the percentage that we should be allocating toward benefits. And next year, it looks like we're going to have a large increase in benefits and so we budgeted for 9.4% cap on that based on the information that we know from Holmes-Murphy currently. Could change, when it does change, then we will submit a budget amendment to true that up, up to the cap amount. We will not go over the cap amount. At that point, we then have to talk about cost sharing, changing our plan, or what we're going to do with increases over the cap amount. But we are budgeting for 9.4% increase currently. Retirement for both certificated and non-certificated staffs did not change. This has not changed for many years. We've been very fortunate that this hasn't changed. I haven't heard that it's looking toward changing, but I really don't have any basis to say when to expect a change on that, but I'm just glad it's holding steady. Other things that we budgeted for, purchased services and supplies increased relative to additional enrollments and that's just pretty typical on that rate. on that one? Okay, my next slide. I'm going to move on to capital and major repairs. This is a lot to look at, but I want to first comment that we have taken a major change in the way we're doing the capital process, and we're bringing more people to the table, more people that know what we need to do with capital and major repairs, and the people that need to have a voice at the table. In the past, they didn't have. And Steve Anderson has been instrumental in getting that process rolling. And I foresee that we will continue to change that process just a little bit to keep people involved and keep a rolling schedule of what needs to be done, so it doesn't just fall off the table from year to year like it has in the past. And we're doing a lot to make that a better process. That being said, our capital spend is a little bit larger this year, but you will remember that we are transferring from operating at $5 million a year, give or take a few hundred thousand dollars, to anticipate the capital spend that we needed to have this year. So some of the things that hadn't been done in the past are now coming back to really need to be done. So you'll notice in the capital budget that it appears that we are deficit spending, but with a capital budget, you plan to build it up and then spend it back down. So it's not a true deficit spend, but we are spending more in this current year than we are putting in. But that is planned. So you will also notice on the bottom that the technology leases have all been completed. Now, we are fully one-to-one with the coming FY '16 year. So what happens now with all of those leases in place, we continue to pay them off, and as the replacement cycles come new, they will be renewed. So the amount you are seeing will be pretty consistent, save for any increase in pricing. But you can expect, as long as we continue to be providing one-to-one devices for our students, that you will see that type of payment structure unless we choose to do something else with providing technology. So I really feel good about the capital process this year and how it went. It's usually one of the last things that happens and can be a rushed process, but I think we've taken our time and really had a well-thought-out process this year. So I'm very pleased with that, and I thank Steve Anderson and his staff for doing that for us. Let's go on to the next slide. And what you'll see here is we're going back to talking about operating really quickly. And you'll see our history of our fund balance. We're back in '08 and '09. We took the little dip, and then we came back up and dipped a bit in '13. You'll see in '15 and '16, we took a slight dip down from '14, but, and that can be explained because of things like the construction. Several of the buildings were funded, their supplies were funded out of the operating budget, so that dipped a little bit. That was planned. That's the way it happened. They weren't taken into the lease purchase, so some of those supplies caused that fund balance just to dip a slight bit. Nothing to be concerned, but the trend shows back up, headed upward for '17, '18, '19, and '20. And you can see across the top, all things being the same right now, with all the assumptions being the same across your operating document, that in '19, '20, the fund balance percentage was projected out to be 19.69 percent. So I feel that we're in a good place right now and are building up enough operating funds to do some things that we aren't going to be needing to do. And so I'm pleased with that. If you go on to the next slide, I just want to remind you.
Cindy, can we go back?
We go back?
Yeah, quick question.
Absolutely.
So in order to project out into the '17, '18, '19, '20 years, you've obviously had to make an assumption about tax revenue. Can you remind me what that projection is for this planning purpose?
It's flat at 2 percent all the way across now.
So assuming that there's some new construction and/or property values rise, 2 percent?
Absolutely. Based on what, being conservative, based on what we know now, a 2 percent revenue assessed valuation increase is pretty safe based on past history, assuming the economy doesn't tank again.
And that historical graph, I think, really captures that, in that if you were to go back prior to the economic decline, you know, your lowest was about a 6 percent increase still.
Yes.
And now we're excited about 3 percent growth.
Right.
So to look at that forecast document and assume 2 percent growth is pretty conservative.
Yeah.
But fortunate for us, it's positive as compared to negative as what we've experienced previously. So.
And based on historical trends, that 2 percent could be worst-case scenario.
And on the student side, is that 3 to 4 percent demographer study that's driving the expense side?
You saw the demographer numbers. We use those numbers in projecting out. They're the basis of what we calculate our formula revenue on. Yes.
And if we do see that continuing to play out, and we do see the fund balances, I think it's much too far out for us to say this for sure, but the commitment we have made is that we will evaluate the levy. And I just.
Right.
We need to keep having those conversations, that if the trends continue positively, we've made that commitment.
The beauty of the, really, the beauty of that operating document is not so much to see that that fund balance, it is to see that that fund balance, we can sustain what we're doing today in '19, '20 if nothing would change, which is right now what we want to do with that. It really isn't to say that revenues are going to be flat. But if they were, what we are doing right now is not going to sink the ship in '19, '20. Does that make sense?
Yep. Let's not make a decision. Buy something we can't afford.
Exactly.
Down the road.
Exactly. I wanted just to revisit this, these next two slides real quickly to remind us all why an 18 percent fund balance is something that you've guided us to keep in our sights. What you see here is a fund balance of 12 percent. And if you look down toward October, you'll see that our operating fund balance is at 2.9 million dollars. And then in November, we dipped into the negative. That means we don't have cash to make payroll. Based on the way our revenue stream comes in, all in January, if we don't provide enough reserves, we don't meet payroll in the months of November and December, which causes us to have to borrow at a 12 percent fund balance. So you see the next slide at 18 percent fund balance, that in November, we have an 8.6 million dollar fund balance, and in December, we still have a $6 million reserve. So we're comfortable at 18 percent. We feel really good with 18 percent, and we can typically weather any unexpected surprises if we live within our means and keep our balance at 18 percent or higher. So that's just a good reminder of why 18 percent is the number we and you have chosen to have our benchmark set at. Next slide, then, will tell you just a, this is a snapshot of the revenue picture of that big operating projection document, so you can see the close-up of what we are doing, because that document is so small. And I want you to know that it's broken down by function, which are the four-digit numbers in the second column. In the budget document, you can actually go in and see how, what comprises those snapshot, those compressed numbers. So there are many more things than just what the one line is that make up those items. So you might want to take a look at that. And the same can be said for the next slide, which is expenditures. And that's all contained in the budget document. So you have that budget document. What I anticipate changing most of all are the revenue side and then the actual expenditures and where we actually end up for FY '15. So that's what you can expect to change between now and the end of January, or June, when that document is presented for your approval. And if you have any questions on that document after you have time to peruse it and look through it, please email me, give me a phone call. I'd be glad to talk with you about anything. Other than that, that's the end of my presentation on the budget document. Any questions? Any other questions? Great. Thank you all.
So the next item is contracts and agreements?
Yeah, a couple of items this evening under 8.02. You do have several contracts that are captured for approval this evening, which are all renewals, with the exception of one, and that is an item from Broker Services, and that Dr. Vogelar and his team have been working on that agreement, going from the bidding process to the point of selection. So I wanted to provide him an opportunity to provide a recommendation on that item.
Thank you very much. And we did upload a memo that Bob Charlesworth sent. Charlesworth Associates assisted us in the process of conducting the RFP and selecting the recommendation that's before you, Holmes Murphy and Associates, the incumbent, and the process. As you see, there were four respondents to the RFP, and after an examination of all four reports with the criteria listed in the memo, we decided to recommend reemploying Holmes Murphy and Associates as our broker of choice. That's a three-year contract with the option to renewal, to renew for two additional years, so maximum of five years before an RFP. Of course, we have the right to change that at any time under the terms of the contract. So that's our recommendation that we'll put into place at June 1 start for the broker relationship.
The other two items that are included are two items presented for first read, and that's Contract with Inquiry Schools Incorporated and looking at our renewal agreement with Niles Media. So that captures the information on the contracts and agreements.
Any questions on any of those agreements? Recommended action as I move the board approve the contracts and agreements presented for adoption on first read? Sandra, would you call roll?
Scott?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rashida Kears.
All right, the administration report.
Ms. Becky Gossett with Academic Services.
Well, you have our report in front of you and also the program evaluation from Colleen Jones, and we have some more information about that. But a few items for your attention. One is that our summer school numbers are rising as we speak and currently are above the 4,600 mark, pre-K through grade 12, most of that at elementary. And a lot of, a lot of people, a big team, have been working on summer school and trying to make that successful. So another important issue is that our innovations and learning coaches, our instructional coaches, have been working hard to get together a literacy framework that's doable and that can roll out to every teacher who teaches elementary especially. And this is a great area for us to receive PD in next year, and they've worked hard to make that doable. You can look in the section of the report from the elementary education section. There's a STEM and PLTW launch introduction video that you might be interested in, opening later in looking through. Great graduation. For some of us, more than others, maybe. So thank you for your efforts, and of course, it was a great day for Liberty and for both high schools. So that was a big, big feature for secondary education section. And then also, I wanted you to notice that on May 8, we had the Third Annual Job Olympics for our kids with special needs who will be probably going into the job market and working, who have been learning a lot of great skills that will help them be employable. And this little Job Olympics Day is quite a highlight. It's gotten to be quite a big thing. So if any of you next year, we'll try and make sure you're aware. But a lot of people from the community worked as judges, and then the day culminated in a great celebration, and kids got awards for their work, and it was just a great thing. Seven schools were represented, high schools, and that included three districts. And some of those did, and another, a fourth district came to watch to see if maybe they'd like to join in next year. So, so that's a good thing. So these are all happy times. As I said, Colleen Jones has presented her program evaluation, and I think in just a minute, Colleen, if you want to come, and she has some students also who would like to address you. But there is one other issue, and that is that we have presented as a department something for your review, and that is the items that need, the supplies that are needed for our July training for PLTW for elementary. And this is something that we are asking that you view in hopes that it can be approved at the next meeting. So if that, if you can peruse that, and if you have questions, I'm not sure the exact right person is here, but we'll do our best to answer questions about that. Again, this is, I think, we mentioned to you before, that we hope to really move forward with PLTW at the elementary level, piloted this year at Lewis and Clark, and are ready to roll out to every elementary. The principals chose to really get on board and move forward with this in a big way. We can certainly try to answer any questions you have about that, if you have any. Okay, so that's good. All right, Colleen.
Hi.
Are there other questions for me before I move off and let Colleen up?
I do have a question.
Uh-huh.
Can you explain in a way that helps me understand, and maybe I'm just being obtuse, about this, how the ELA and math assessments are being calculated?
ELA and math assessments, that's from the state, and it is a little different. And Molly, you may have to help me if I mess this up. But as we understand it, because the assessments are different this year, we will not, it's kind of a hold harmless situation where whatever score we get this year, and then looking at last year's scores, we will be held at the level of our highest score between those two years.
And they're calling it a call score, and that was something that was different. And I went back and looked through the MSA manuals, and didn't see any reference to call score previously. And I did a little more research, and exactly as Betty has described, what it looks like is they're going to look at last year's math in the LA scores versus this year's math in the LA scores and take the best of those two years. And you will not perform below.
Last year's level, because it's a whole new assessment and a whole way of doing the assessment.
I gave you almost every bit of information that came off of the DESI memo in the report regarding that. And there really isn't much more published information from DESI about how they're competing.
So it'd be really interesting to compare districts, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And they delayed the return of the score report, so we can't really play with what that looks like at this point in time.
You have a couple of other factors, so chalk it up under the title transition with the state, in that you have Missouri learning standards that are still in flux and under development with the learning groups at the state level and kind of the work that's being done there. They are charged with identifying Missouri's learning standards no later than October of 2015, so this coming fall. Couple that with the legislative process in Jefferson City wrapping up, in that the budget document that was forwarded to the governor captured around $7 million to be allocated towards changes in assessment, of which they're asking that Missouri not participate in the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium. And so all of that has implications, not only on our next APR, but certainly how our students fared in this last round of assessments. So it's really in flux, and so that's why we're relying so much on the department for information they share to us.
I can say, Kim Marie, that we felt good about what happened in Liberty this year. We won't know, of course, the outcome of that, but in terms of rolling out a whole new process with whole new standards, really, it's, we're probably in as good a shape as anyone is, and things went very smoothly.
And I think that's really important, what you just said. We feel good about where we are.
Yeah.
With this.
Yeah.
So they're taking.
I'm sorry. They're taking our test results from last year, which is a totally different test.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just, I wanted to make sure I understood that.
I think we all see how this, you know, it complicates the way we look at it. But this is what it is, so.
And last year, the additional, the optional VOCs counted, that they could help you on your APR. This year, they are not complicated. So in other districts that chose to take several of the optional VOCs and thus boost their scores, and take many optional VOCs, that, that may rumbles on the sound a little bit. The districts moving out of 4,000 in certain areas with optional VOCs.
Those are gone.
Yeah.
I like that part.
So it's kind of being the silver lining in that.
Yes.
All right, I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Jones.
I appreciate it. Members of the Board of Education and Administrators, I'd like to draw your attention to the program document that I have on Board Docs for you. Not that I want you to look at that completely, but I have some supporting evidence that I'd like to draw your attention to. One is the supporting data from 2014, '15, and an increase in shadowing that we've had this year for our students. Last year, we began with our high school students and being able to shadow in several companies. This year, our shadowing has increased and just dramatically. And we've also included some of our middle-level students who have been able to shadow as well. Internships are being placed right now. I just told Dr. Williams today that today alone, I had six students. Williams today that today alone, I had six students that were interested in internships because school is getting out on Wednesday, and so now it's becoming a priority. So that's a really good thing, a really good thing. But you can also see on that sheet how it kind of breaks down with engineering and medical, seeing that those are our top two, followed by business, automotive, and veterinary science. We have several other opportunities as well, as that is noted by what students are interested in. We also started this year with eighth-grade career fairs. We've had four career fairs this spring to draw more attention to what some of the, the opportunities are out there, along with our Breakfast with the Experts and Professions Connections, in which we bring professionals in from the community to be able to share with students, ask questions in a roundtable basis, and provide more one-on-one conversations. Our panels have increased in student attendance, and we now have about forty to seventy-plus attending each of those sessions. And so that's, that's been an interesting increase this year. I also want to draw attention to the Community Partnerships page. I have two separate ones. First of all, the Community Partnerships list is for our secondary schools. Those are career or program partners. Many community, or many businesses would like to partner with, say, engineering, for example, medical, business, computer science, some of those areas at the secondary level, instead of at a particular school-based level. So that's what that is, career and program partners. You'll also see another page that shows school partnerships. This is in progress and has just been started for the 2015-16 school year for our elementary buildings. At that level, each building is receiving partners by school, so they can partner, for example, in the area of math or something of that nature. So that is an ongoing list, and that's the very beginning piece of that list, but I wanted you to be able to have that. Matter of fact, we have two that were added today that are not on there right now, so they're being added. I also included the career newsletter that has been sent out to our community partners and school partners, so that you could kind of see what, what they're receiving. That will be a quarterly newsletter next year, so they can get a feel of how they can connect a little bit easier with Liberty Public Schools. Tonight, what I would like to do is showcase some of the programs that we have in place and have been working this year. As I mentioned, last year, we started with shadowing at the high school level. This year, we had lots of middle-level students that shadowed. And this evening, I have Gabby Rial, who's an eighth grader that is with us this evening. Her teacher, Rebecca Groby, is here with her as well. But I've asked Gabby to come and tell a little bit about her shadowing experience.
Hello. I have some pictures and stuff to pass.
Pictures are good.
Okay, so I shadowed at Museum at Prairie Fire, which is down in Kansas. They are a chain off of the American Museum of National History in New York City. They have traveling expositions that come in, and they get a new one every couple of months. So they take those down and set them up. And when I went to my shadow ship, I was actually there in a time where there were in-between exhibitions, so I got to see them setting up the exhibition. So in one of the pictures, there are these gigantic crates full of artifacts, and then I got to see them building it, putting together all of the bones, setting all the fossils out, and setting everything up, and just seeing it come to life in the museum. That's really a neat experience, because I also went back during spring break, and I got to see it completely finished. So it just, seeing in those, in those wooden crates full of packing peanuts and all of the stuff, and just seeing all of the lighting and the temporary walls that they put up, and the bones, and it was just a really neat thing. One of the days I was there, they had a school group that came in, and I got to help out and show them around and help out with the kids. One of the teachers actually asked me what my major was, and if I worked there full-time. I was like, I'm an eighth grader. I am here shadowing to get some experience. And I honestly really enjoyed the experience. I am planning on being a teacher when I grow up. So it was really neat to just be there and get the hands-on with the kids. They have a discovery room, which is for ages three to twelve, and the kids go in there in forty-five-minute periods, and they get to just run around and look at all of the stuff, and play, and learn while they're playing. So while the school group was there, I got to run around and play with the kids and be like, oh, did you know this? Did you know this? And I felt really smart, and that was kind of fun. During spring break, when I went, my mom was actually babysitting one of the days. So we got to take a little, a little girl named Suri. She loves dinosaurs, and the exhibition they had was dinosaurs. So she was running through the exhibition rooms, looking at everything in awe, and was, dinosaurs? 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 We were in there for at least an hour, and she did not want to go out of the exhibition. We were like, they have a discovery room, and you can go upstairs and play, but she didn't even want to leave. Eventually, there was another family that came in, and we were like, follow the little kids out. And she did. So then we went up to the discovery room, and she played around, and they actually got out one of their hedgehogs, and that was really cool. We got to see it run around, and it was just really neat to see her experience and learn, and building the puzzles, and realizing all of the different animals that there were. Overall, I really want to go back and volunteer this summer. They were constantly being, hey, when you, can you come back and do this? Or can you come back and volunteer over the summer? And I'm like, yeah, sure. And they're like, well, you're sixteen, right? No, I'm fourteen. Well, we can probably find something for you. I'm hoping that in the future that I can maybe possibly have an internship there. And it just confirmed my love for wanting to be a teacher and work with the kids. It was really a neat experience, and thank you so much for supporting the program.
Gabby, that was awesome. It was great to see your enthusiasm and just hear your heartfelt comments. So thank you for being here. Also, thanks to her parents for being here this evening as well. Gabby said something important there, and she talked about how that she went during spring break. Most of our students like to shadow when there's time off from school, and we are really purposeful to make sure that we have those times for them. The majority of our students want to shadow during those times. Another partnership that I want to highlight tonight is one that we have had with one of our district partners, and that is the City of Liberty. It was interesting this fall that we met with the mayor and some other folks from the City of Liberty, and they posed a problem to some of the teachers and myself about needing some help with a shade park. Some of our engineering students from Liberty North took that project on, are still working on that, and will be working with the city to come up with that presentation here relatively soon. But then there was another problem that they came up with, and that was one of, a challenge for melting snow and melting ice. And so we talked about that a little bit, and happened to talk to some of the chemistry teachers. One thing led to another. And this evening, I would like to introduce Todd McDonald, who is Liberty High School chemistry teacher, and he will introduce some of his students that have been working on this challenge from the city.
Hi, I'm Todd McDonald, Liberty High School. Most of my work is, is going to be letting them speak, but I wanted to thank Colleen Jones and also Steve Hanson with the City of Liberty for kind of forging a partnership that we've been super excited about. I mean, what gets more, gets us more excited than melting ice? So I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to these guys. They put together a little presentation for you, but thank you.
If you could go ahead and go one more slide ahead, please. Okay, we were asked by the City of Liberty to test the effects of different ice melt solutions on their effectiveness of melting ice, their freezing capabilities, effects on the environment, corrosion potentiality, and, and effects on traction. And here are our results. This is melting and freezing data. There were seventeen labs that experimented with melting and freezing data without, within all of the college chemistry classes. Some of the experiments dealt with time taken to melt. There were seven labs that experimented with time. The most effective one, most effective solution was calcium chloride, and fifty-seven percent of all the experiments concluded that calcium chloride was the most effective. And this is just a graph, kind of explaining the percentages of each. There were three labs that experimented with the freezing point of each solution. Oh, two out of three of the labs concluded that calcium chloride had the lowest freezing point. And I think one of the labs had negative forty-four degrees, and that was at seventy-five percent concentration. Okay, and finally, there were nine experiments that dealt with mass melting in the solutions. And again, calcium chloride came out as the winner. Fifty-six percent of all the labs concluded that calcium chloride was melted the most mass of different masses of ice.
All right. Our partner could not be here tonight, who actually covered the environmental impact, so I'm going to take over for him. We found out that plants are affected by what we put to melt the ice, you know, they're by the road, they're on the sidewalks and stuff. We found that almost all of the solutions, except rock salt, affected the plants in a negative way. But we do want to remind you that for the experiments, they were very severe. We would take the flowers or whatever, and we'd put them straight into the solution, fifty-fifty with water. So let's, it wasn't the healthiest way to do it, but it, we only had a small time. It was about, yeah, you can see here, that's what they looked like when they started. Want to go to the next one? That's what they look like on day seven. Yeah, but we put them straight into the solution. So we found out that the only one who didn't negatively kill them immediately was rock salt.
And here are the corrosion results. We tested the effect on car metals, ice, car tires, and cement. We found out that on car metals, as you can see in that picture there, it does not look the prettiest, but it actually does not do very much damage to car metals in general. And we also found that, that BHE concentrated and BHE fifty-five were the best for car metals, and in fact, strengthened them in the end. And here are some groups that are testing the corrosion on, of ice and tires, seen through these pictures. And here are the other groups testing corrosion of car metals and cement.
Okay, our final thing we tested was how each ice melt solution affected the traction or friction. We asked different questions, like how many steps would it take to walk off, and if it stained? The coefficient of friction of each, on each surface, excuse me, on the surface of the ice, and if mixing rock salt with a different substance helped make it stick to the road better. Our first one, you can see they would step in a bin with the solution pour in there, and then they would walk across it. They found out of the three solutions, BHE fifty-five, Husker Plus, and BHE severe, that BHE severe walked off the fastest and stained the least. If you go one more, you can see the staining of the Husker Plus on the shoes. So it can affect your shoes in a bad way. Do you want to go to the next one? We also, we also tested the coefficient of friction across on each one. Rock salt was the best. They would pour the liquid or the salt onto a frozen sheet of ice and then use a physics tool, actually, to pull the cross and measure the coefficient of friction. And then you can see the setup. And then the last question was if mixing rock salt with a different substance would actually help it stick better. They found that molasses works, works best, because they Googled it, and an actual city uses molasses. I doubt we will do that, but in case you guys wanted to think about that, molasses works best. But we found that it did work. Mixing rock salt with other substance helped a lot. They would put the rock salt on, spray the substance on it, turn it sideways, and then spray water on it, and see how fast it fell off. And they found that, well, if you turn rock salt sideways, it just falls off. So mixing it with other solutions helped. And that's just what we found overall. So, yeah. Do you guys have any questions for us about how we tested our, our results?
Was there one in particular that stood out that you made a recommendation to the city?
Um, we did. We thought that calcium chloride did melt the fastest, and we recommended still using rock salt and mixing it, is what we pretty much recommended. We're hoping to continue every year to help make it more precise, precise and accurate, because we didn't have a lot of time to do it, and it was our first time. So we didn't really know what we needed or what we wanted to test. Thanks to Mr. McDonald, he just said, okay, tell me what you need. And we just all made up whatever experiments we wanted, and then, you know, go to Hy-Vee and pick up some flowers, or whatever we needed. Some dry ice, yes. Because we couldn't get the freezing point down far enough for, to measure the freezing point. You know, negative forty-four degrees, that's pretty low.
Well, if you, if you recommend using molasses, will you let us know so we can be there to watch the reaction? Because I want to see their reaction to that suggestion.
We want you guys to use molasses, yes.
I did a poor job introduction. This is Katie Preyass, this is Deborah White and Megan Whipple, three of my brightest and best students that have attended the conference.
Great, thank you very much. New concoction at the house this winter.
You know, the weather really didn't help them out this year either. They had big plans, and it was kind of a nice, nice winter, so they had to come up with some things on their own. This is just one example of an authentic project, and working with some of our community partners. And I think you can see the enthusiasm and the excitement that they have for this. They did present to city leaders, I believe it was last week, correct? And then, I believe, next week, you're presenting again. Is that correct?
Yes.
To the city council, I believe. So that's an authentic way to involve our community partners. And sometimes with career ed, it's not just about what do you want to be when you grow up. It's changing now to what problem do you want to solve, as we see our world changing so much? How do we help kids identify what some of those problems are, where their skills are, and then help them to find, you know, some opportunities to learn more about what's out there. So that's all that I have for the report this evening. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll entertain those at this time.
Your presenters did a fabulous job.
They did, didn't they? Can we give them another round of applause to all of us? And thank you to the teachers for spending their evening with us as well. Thank you.
Does this bring us to the finance report? Didn't, didn't we just hear from you, Cindy?
Yes.
This will be real short. Yeah, I do have one thing. I, I did want to say it's really nice to hear from students in this building. We're not close to students, and to be reminded of why we're here, it's always a nice thing. So I appreciate their presentations. In accordance with board policy, KH Public gives to school, the following donations are presented. A monetary donation of $700 from Sir Optimist International of Liberty donated to student services to be used for the necessities closet. Reiterate, eighteen point six one percent fund balance is where we're sitting today. We are wrapping up at the end of March, or May, with POs and closing up the fiscal year, and we'll have final numbers for you in June. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Cindy, I like that.
Dr. Vogelar?
Thank you. The HR report is attached. I want to focus or highlight specifically where we are on the premium differential as it relates to the health risk assessments and screenings that we've been hosting. We've now completed all of those offerings. My hat's off to Rebecca Fisher, our wellness coordinator, to Dee Rosecrans, who is our wellness liaison with the district. They worked tirelessly to provide many opportunities for employees to participate. As a result, you see eighty-two point six percent completion rate. It's amazing. We typically hover around twenty-eight percent to thirty-one percent. Our highest year was forty-nine percent. So employees are responding. Rebecca is following up with all of the individuals who have not participated or only completed one or the other part of it, just to ensure. one or the other part of it, just to ensure that everybody's given an opportunity to know that the premium differential, which is a $600 cost share initiative that would start in 2016, that they're fully aware of that. What she's discovered is that a handful of those individuals indicated to her that they are resigning and not returning in the fall, and those resignations did matriculate to her, so that accounts for a certain portion. And then many of the others have said that either one or both portions were going to be done through their doctors, a part of their well-person visit, which is certainly an opportunity that is extended to them as well. These onsite screenings were not the way to accomplish these, these two sets of screenings, but it was something we provided as a convenience at various locations, just to make it easier for employees to participate. So when this report was published, it was 82.6%. As of today, it's now 82.8%. So it's, it's eking up. Rebecca feels very confident that we should get to 85%. And, you know, because it is a volunteer participation, we can't mandate that people participate. We just hope that no one is not realizing that the $600 premium differential kicks in in 2016 if they don't accomplish this. And that, she's working tirelessly, like I said, contacting every individual that doesn't have completion to just make sure that they're fully aware. So that's a part of the report I want to draw attention to. Yes, this is a pretty important part, and I just want to make sure we, we make you aware of it because in 2016, we don't want anybody to be surprised. So, thank you.
I'm curious, any observations about what drove the great results? Was it?
The turnout, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I haven't seen the aggregate results. I've seen my own personal results, and they weren't great, so, but in terms of participation rate. Yeah, cost-sharing health insurance, obviously, is an incentive. And we've had a tremendous track record of providing a wonderful health benefits package to our employees. We've never had a mandatory cost-sharing type situation. We're looking at, I know from the budget reports, the draft budget reports, an estimated, you know, nine-plus percent increase. And next year may be larger than that. But because we budget a set amount toward health insurance, any increase over that obviously results in additional cost sharing. So that risk of cost sharing plus this actual cost sharing is a tremendous incentive. That and communication. I know Steve mentioned to me just how impressed he was with how easy that Rebecca and her team and Dee made it for people to participate. And I did pass that compliment on to her. She's very appreciative of that, so.
So there are some process things that are different from previous, but it's mostly the incentive from your?
Yeah, you know, the communication's always been there.
Having your onsite person through Blue Cross Blue Shield is huge. It's not additional cost.
Yeah, and, you know, Rebecca, you know, she's been just as committed to communicating and getting the word out this year as she has in any previous year. But the participation rate, you know, really, when you're offering trinkets as incentives, you're just going to, you're going to get, you know, low levels of participation. So health-conscious people will likely participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vogelar. Next is operations, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. I just have three quick items. One is, I was going to reference quickly the capital master plan that Cindy made a point to reference in her presentation on the budget. We had hoped to push that out at the end of last week. We have now, I think, the final cut on the final plan, which we hope to push out this week at some point for you all to kind of take a look at. The other quick reference, I did receive an email earlier this afternoon from our engineers on the Epic or Conister Crosswalk, and we have approved plans, and now we're getting ready to put those out to bid, and should be able to put that into place yet this summer before the start of school and fall. And last, I'd like to queue up a brief video that just provides a couple-minute overview of the construction progress being made. And real quick, JP with Now's Media and Emily Klink, who's an LPS student, put this together, working with Dallas and I, as we kind of walked the sites one day last week.
As you may have noticed, throughout the 2014-2015 school year, construction projects have continued at the district's two high school sites. At Liberty High School, work has moved along nicely on the school's new competitive gymnasium. This facility will have a capacity of just over 1,500 and will not only host larger school activities beginning in the fall, but will also provide much-needed space for the school's physical education classes, along with flexible space. In addition to the gymnasium, other building renovations have taken place to provide students with a positive learning experiences and collaborative spaces. All projects at Liberty High School are expected to be fully completed when students return to school in August. Up the road at Liberty North High School, everyone is excited for new classroom space to be introduced in time for the start of the 2015-2016 school year. Included in the new addition are 18 classrooms, four science labs, three small group rooms, two teacher meeting rooms, along with several open flex spaces that will allow for collaboration opportunities and a set of learning stairs. This added space will allow students to be educated within the main walls of the building rather than the modular classrooms used in recent years. Earlier this spring, work was completed on the school's track with students being able to use the space for the spring sports season. The completion of these projects officially wraps up construction following the passage of a district levy issued in November of 2013. LPS continues to see between 300 and 350 additional students to the district each year, and is one of the fastest-growing districts in the state of Missouri. Thanks in large part to a supportive community, the district provides students with the necessary facilities to be successful in a safe learning environment. This has been Emily Klink reporting.
So we have, happy to take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Anderson? Had a patron ask me the other night if we were going to be able to move the freshmen in from the modular units with the expansion of the wing at Liberty North. And I guess he was of the understanding that that's where we kept our freshmen. Told him that was not the case. But that will, that will in fact create a little bit of breathing room for us as that addition has expanded. So thank you to Emily Klink and to Mr. Anderson in terms of that update. Only a couple of things to add to my report this evening. As Becky mentioned earlier, congratulations to Liberty High School and Liberty North and the class of 2015. Want to specifically thank Dr. Jacobs, Dr. Adams, their staff for putting on two great commencement experiences yesterday. So what a, what a great time of celebration with both of those senior classes. We've provided you a brief update each time we've met the last couple of times on Liberty Alliance for Youth and our best process that we have in place. And they met, in fact, on May 12th with some members that were carried over from the BEST Committee in years past, along with Liberty Alliance for Youth, and had a great time of looking at data, planning next steps for this group. And really, where we landed was utilizing Liberty Alliance for Youth in terms of focusing on some of those areas that we've identified as far as student well-being, but then also folding in parent engagement opportunities as far as soliciting committee members, those interested in really diving into these topics. So appreciate Becky's help in formulating that group. Look forward to the fall as we continue to identify the work that's going to be critical in ensuring student well-being. They also helped facilitate an event back on April 30th entitled Sticks and Stones. As you'll recall, we've provided you information on that. That was a great evening, not only to capture an important topic around suicide, suicide prevention, but then also the opportunity to provide a variety of resources that are available to us in the City of Liberty, Kansas City, Clay County, to support students and their families around these issues. So we look to try to be able to do more of that, knowing that we've identified an area of need that we have within our community today, which could likely evolve as a variety of issues come about, societal, but then also the things that impact our kids and being able to provide those resources that are so needed. Want to also express appreciation to Parent Teacher Association, as well as the Liberty Parent Action Network for providing individuals that were interested in serving in that capacity, and we'll look to continue that conversation. The last item I wanted to provide an update on is that the legislative session this spring came to a conclusion last Friday, and it really ended oddly, for lack of a better word, and some changes occurring in the Missouri House of Representatives with leadership, but then also within the state senate, some changes that occurred or filibusters that took place in respect to a variety of pieces of legislation. So we're still trying to sift out where the legislative session ended, as far as those items that did pass and those items that did not pass for a variety of reasons. And we'll look to push out a final report to the board. The one piece we're looking at, too, in fact, House Bill 42, and whether or not the governor chooses to veto that particular bill, which is entitled a transfer bill, but in fact has very little to do with transfers, as it really opens up open enrollment opportunities and charter school provisions further throughout the state of Missouri. The last piece would be as it relates to the Missouri budget, as was mentioned earlier by Cindy in her update, to see and realize how that flushes out in terms of some of the assumptions and parameters that we've built into the budget presented to you this evening. So those were the few items that we had, but would certainly entertain any questions for you all.
All right. Upcoming meetings, we have a board retreat on June 2nd, and the standing board meeting has been moved back to June 29th so that we can get as close to final budget numbers, you know, Cindy, as possible. So a much simpler list of meetings than we had last month when we met. Board committee reports, do we have any board committee reports to make this evening?
Dr. Becker mentioned it, but I attended the BEST Committee as well. It was a very good use of time. One of the things we did, I think I sat, did we kind of table together that one? And talked about the attitudes of kids in drugs, alcohol, marijuana, prescription drug use, and it was interesting to see some trends. A little scary to see some of those trends and some of those numbers, but that's good to have in front of, in front of staff, in front of parents and people, so that they're aware of where kids, kind of what they're thinking right now, so. But it was a good use of time.
Good group. Any other board reports or remarks anyone wants to make? Appreciate everybody coming out in force yesterday for the graduations. See off 750 of our finest as they graduated. In that case, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank goodness. Sandra?
Scott?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
If she carries. Yes.